Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. Always nice to have visitors. So, in case I forget, happy holidays to everybody. Some of you might leave before the meeting's over. I know we're interesting and all, but... So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I don't have any changes. Does anyone else?
We said a change.
Yeah, I added a certain check and I don't remember what the check number was. May I put it there?
Uh, check number three through two, four, seven, three.
Thank you.
And the amount is sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
Three, three, two, what?
No, the total check was perborne.
Just guessing that's a re- that's just the reimbursement for some of the conference stuff?
No, it was the business part.
Is that something that we have to separate every agenda since it's separate?
I should, because I can't vote for it.
For you?
Yeah.
Well, you can just abstain.
And for the whole thing?
Well, I don't want to abstain from all of it.
Okay. Separate it. What's the number?
Uh, I'll give you the check number, but then I'll give you the amount.
We'll get it later.
Three, three, two, four, seven, three.
Three, three, two, four, seven, three. Okay. So, we'll have two motions when we get to the bills. We'll have three, three, two, four, seven, three. Carol, you'll give us the numbers later. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I have none.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Um, sorry, Mrs.?
Right or right?
Motion by Deondi, second by Drake.
Correct.
Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Deondi?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is recognitions. And we have one tonight.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Mr. Poe to step forward and start an introduction of Courtney, so, Mr. Poe? Courtney, you wanna come up and stand by me?
No, she doesn't.
Originally, I thought her coach would be here, but he might've gotten detained, because he is our club coach. So, I'm gonna talk about Courtney. I'm gonna start off, the first thing I gotta say about Courtney is Courtney is our most decorated girl swimmer of all time. She has the most state appearances, the most state medals of any girl swimmer. Courtney's been absolutely phenomenal all four years. And when I look at her career, I think what epitomizes Courtney was this past year. It was a very tough week for her and her teammates going into the state meet. The unexpected happened, and very easily Courtney could've just said, "I can't do this, there's no way." But instead, she rose to the challenge and finished fifth in the Hundred Backstroke and finished ninth in the Fifty Free. And just was very impressive in what she did and the courage she took to get in the water and represent our school and represent our swim program, both boys and girls, really, that particular weekend. So, I present to you Courtney Barker, and I'm just extremely proud that she's one of our own, and she will be going to Tulane to continue on her swim career in the fall. So, I'll stand.
Thank you.
I remember Courtney in intermediate, she was at the intermediate school over at Woodland, and all the parent volunteers would watch her, because everyone wanted Courtney on their team when they were doing all the field events. So, we saw her talent years and years and years ago. Congratulations.
An amazing athlete, and we wish you the best at Tulane. And I know, as a mom of a swimmer, swimmers, that it will be a wonderful four years. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Moving along? I know we're interesting, Courtney, but you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. You can. I mean, I'm not trying to run you off or anything.
We'll take that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your dedication. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. This is the part of the meeting where anyone who wants to address the board will be given their three minutes of fame. Nobody has signed in. Is there anybody here who didn't sign in who'd like to address the board for their three minutes of fame? We have no visitors. We'll move on to the agenda, to the president's report. I have the, there's a newsletter-type document that I got from C-Doll, which gives a little update on some of the things that they've been working on over there. Interesting reading, nothing really startling, but I just wanted to pass that information along to everybody, as we do send... Right. And then, so if anybody has questions about that, I can try to get those answered, certainly, if you'd like. The, other than that, I thought we, if anybody had something they wanted to share from the triple I convention the weekend before Thanksgiving? I didn't, I talked to most everybody, except Catherine. I didn't see Catherine. She got there after I went to bed. Shocking. But anyway, so does anybody have anything that, I mean, you don't have to share today, you could share, you know, at the next meet, doesn't really matter, but I thought if anybody was prepared or wanted to, that...
I would like to just mention this, and maybe this can be distributed to all the board members, and we could put it on next month's agenda. But I attended a session by, Terry Engler put it on, she's a partner in Enger, Callaway, Bastin, and Shraga, and it was done with River Forest School District, and it was managing student data in high-tech school environments. And how the presentation came to be was a parent came to a board meeting and basically put the school district on notice that through their one-on-one device program, they were violating FERPA, because they did not have contracts with all of the hardware and software companies to ensure that the student data was protected in terms of how it was collected, how it was stored, how it was deleted. And they went through the whole process of how they got these companies to redo their contracts. And some of the companies, they said they had to, they had to sever their relationship with. And they said the most interesting part was some of the well-known computer companies, the Googles, the Microsofts, those were the people that gave them the most pushback in terms of getting their contracts compliant with FERPA.
And they don't take direction very well.
Pardon?
They don't take direction very well.
Well, they said that nobody else, their answer was, "Why do you care? Nobody else cares." And so, what River Forest said is that, "We need everybody doing this, because FERPA is the federal law, and we have an Illinois law about protecting student data." And they basically put all of the participants who attended their session on notice that you guys need to get this taken care of and work on that. So, they had a handout that, I can give it to...
Yeah, give it to Jean, if you wouldn't mind.
Give it to Jean. And then, maybe, you know, if we wanna cover it in January, but it was a very interesting presentation.
Yeah, I think we should have, give people, you know, John or whomever, a chance to look into it a little bit before we have a discussion, we need to know where we are first, before we can discuss what action we might need to take. So, I think that, it's good information, though, so...
Yeah, they also had, she's got, Terry Engler had some resources on the back and places where we could go and get other information about protecting the student privacy online, educational models in the school industry. And so, it was very informative, and hopefully, we can learn something.
Yeah, very nice.
I attended several sessions. One was about the school resource officer, and I learned a great deal about that, and I also attended one on school safety. And it was interesting, because the school district that came is a very small school district in Illinois, and their county, I don't remember the name of it, I did...
I forgot.
Their county, in one year, they had two intruders in the school. And who would think in a small farming community that there would be an intruder come into the school? And so, it kinda opened my eyes that maybe we are not as secure as we think we are. So, we might wanna look at some things and see if... I also attended a session, and I can't remember the name of it, but I wish I had attended it the first year I was on the board. I will get the name of the class, but it was, it was very helpful to me, and like I said, I wish I had attended it the first year I was on the board. But unfortunately, I don't even know if that class was, was available at that time. But I thought that this year's presentations were all excellent, the ones that I went to. So, I think it's getting better and better each year, and I would highly recommend it.
I went to one on security, which is, you know, doors and keeping things secure, which is, it's part of the business I'm in, so I didn't, it was interesting a little bit to hear what other people are doing, and other districts are doing. So, I didn't really hear anything that I didn't think we were already doing from a, just from a locking and keeping things closed and, you know, keeping people out and cameras and, I mean, there's always updates and things that are newer, but it's just a matter of when you can update them. I think that one of the things I learned, that I kinda knew, but I learned that there's a lot of high-def cameras and stuff out there, and part of the problem with having cameras on campuses, being able to recognize who's on them sometimes. So, I think that's something that, as we, you know, do capital projects, that might be something we wanna do in a rolling way to update our cameras, so we have a better, better visual of things that might or might not be happening. I did, I did another class on, which I'd heard about it, but the new funding model that they're gonna, they're gonna use in Illinois, which is evidence-based funding, I believe. And I learned a lot about that, which I, I'd heard about it, but I didn't really know a lot of the details. So, I found that very interesting as well. So, that was my experience.
I also attended a safety session, and it was interesting, because there was a debate about the impact and the use of school resource officers. And one of the presenters was a former resource officer, and now he works for the Illinois Fusion Center. And his position, now not being a resource officer, was that the school, his position is that the school should handle the discipline themselves and with, like we do with a house security. And then, when it becomes, the incident becomes a police matter, then you bring the police in, make the 911 call and bring the police in. And his basis for that position, he played the video of, I believe it was a school out east where the girl was pulled out of her, her desk, and they dragged her out of the classroom. And he said it changed his perspective on what he thought the role should be. And it, it caused kind of a debate in the session between people's position on, you know, whether they, a police officer should be in school or whether they should just be called when the incident becomes a police matter. But it was interesting that the former resource officer felt that they should only be in the school when it elevates to an incident that involves police intervention. It's just interesting.
To the contrary, just a couple days ago, the incident in California, a student pulled out a knife, and then Courtney and part of other students, and the officer there had to use force to stop that student. And if you had to stop and call 911, there might've been some other tragedies that took place, whether it was one, and then suffering. So, there are, I think, a very good argument for both sides.
Yeah, cuts both ways, for sure.
Having a very defined role, you know, the situation that you had mentioned about the resource officer going in the classroom and pulling someone out of the desk is unnecessary. I think that there's procedures and policies where it goes from being controlled within the school, the administrators and the deans. When it rises to a level where someone's threatening someone else's safety, then I think that's a good thing they have those resources available to you immediately and not waiting for a response.
Yep, it's a good thing to keep in mind, though, certainly worth discussing as we move forward. Okay, committee reports, moving on, we have another curriculum committee report.
We met last Wednesday, and Nate had actually, this is the first time we've done this, is present...
It was Nate's fault.
Nate did. Nate.
Nate did. Yeah. And we have four new courses that we had the committee basically kind of review, and two of them were basically workshop courses, one was for AP Studio Art, and the other one was for senior essay writing for their college essays. So, that one will be going on. And then, we've been working with CLC to get dual credit courses for the summer. So, we're kinda anxious to see how the students will respond to those, but I think it'll be a good idea.
Was the discussion during the meeting as to see whether or not you could offer a certain course to juniors?
Yes.
Was that looked into, and what was...
Yeah, yeah. We have it for juniors.
Yeah, the decision was that we would offer it to juniors, because there was no real reason not to. Initially, when we were just thinking about putting this into place, because there were two courses, actually, was the Intro to Criminology, and then there was the, and then the Intro to Ethics classes. And the thought behind both of those were that you wanted to offer it to seniors as a pilot to see how the interest would go. And then, we thought more through that, and there will be students who attend the technology campus with their criminology program, so allowing those students to take that course, maybe to see what it's about, or get a little bit more advanced understanding of what they're getting themselves into, was, we figured that was a good idea.
Summer school it is.
Summer school it is. And Nate will present the packet that you're on.
Later. Okay.
Essay courses are good at times, because a lot of times, what, they take it at their first semester, senior year, they had to have those turned in already, so summer's perfect.
Right before school starts, and then there's gonna be a follow-up session next over, if they have any last second questions that they want to know.
Fantastic.
Yes. We'll see how that works.
Very good.
Thank you. Superintendent's report is next.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Since our last meeting, we did have one FOIA come in from RJB Properties. They were interested in some information on our bid awardance to custodial contract back in 2015. Also included in the board packet is our normal monthly staffing plans, gifts to the district, and our monthly attendance enrollment and out-of-school suspension report. And I believe we have a treasurer's report as well, Carol, is that correct?
Yes, we do. We have the treasurer's report for August of 2016, for both district funds and student activity funds. I went through and did a variance analysis of operating revenue and operating expenditures. We, you'll see the variance between last year, year-to-date, 2015 versus year-to-date '16 was about a 1.6 million dollar negative variance. I went through and analyzed that to see what accounted for that, and I did include that in my memo to the board. Another area we're looking at is private tuition, which seemed to have jumped significantly. But, in reality, as we look back at it, it's, seems to be mostly due to timing differences and then the addition of some students. So, we will keep tracking tuition, just to see how we're trending and whether we budgeted enough for that. Of particular concern to me is the lack of receipt of our June 30th, 2016 state categorical aid payment, which is about $883,000 in revenue. I'm not sure of this fact, but my fellow board member, or business managers and myself were talking, and we seem to have heard that if you don't get that payment by December 31st, that it's lost. It's not confirmed. But, being so late in the year, what this indicates to me is that we will probably get three categorical aid payments that we will be able to record for '17. Our budget is based on four. So, right now...
Or including the June 30th one?
Four. We can't, the June 30th one was recorded last year. So, only three physical payments that we can record as revenue, if that fourth payment is as late or half as late as this one is. We can book revenue received attributable to '16 if it's received by August 31st. And when we did the audit, we wrapped the books up before that, anticipated it would be here, and now it's not.
We have to adjust for that, then? Take it out?
Yeah, we're, you know, there's a good chance we'll get three, we'll, we'll lose eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue, budgeted revenue. So, we'll keep watching. You know, the state miraculously seems to fix that, and we hope they, they do do that. But what, what that means to me is that I am really watching the expenditure side much earlier than possa, than normal. And so, unfortunately, you know, it has a impact on our staff, because they've planned and had a budget, and I do notify them ahead of time that, you know, we may have to cut back, and, and it's, you know, really a guessing game at this point, but... It's, it is of concern to me, and I wanted the board to be aware of that. But we will give you a mid-year report in January of a much more detailed analysis of where the first six months stood. So...
We don't know that it's lost at this point, right?
We don't. We don't.
So, we don't wanna start, you know, yanking people's hair out just yet.
No, no, we're not...
Let's wait a little bit.
Yeah.
Has any of that money been released, Carol?
Uh, not...
To any other districts?
No.
No, sorry, no districts?
No districts.
When I was, last week, I met with the, meeting with the state superintendent quarterly, and their message to us was to make sure that we are with legislators and potentially the media, just talking to them in regards to, you know, you say that you're fully funding K-12, right, and you haven't made the cuts, but, you know, when districts aren't getting, in our case, you know, $800,000, this isn't fully funded, right? At some point in time, there's decisions that we're making now, because we're not getting that money. So, it's not, I think they're just still a political game of tug-of-war in Springfield that is causing a lot of this, but obviously, it's not gone anywhere very quickly. And they did, February 1st is still, in terms of where you are at, whether, John, February 1st is still the day by which they're supposed to, you know, commit to a funding model, the evidence-based funding one being the one that most people are behind. But again, the questions they have are still, who's gonna get the credit for this when it's done, because it's a really good idea, right? And the second piece of it is still, on the revenue side, where's the money going to come from, because there is an additional $2 billion that's built into this over four years. So, that's still a piece of it that they have to work out. But there's no question that all the districts in the state are feeling it to some degree or another.
Okay. I got a couple of questions, maybe comments. So, we started the year 2.3 negative, correct?
Correct.
This 1.5, almost 1.6, half of this is maybe not lost. The 8, the 799, the state fund, right? The food service commission based a 400 puts that?
But we went to a different model with food service, so instead of recording all the revenue and recording all the expense, we're just recording commission or rental revenue. So, in purchase services, you will see on your treasurer's report that is, that is trending very positively.
Okay, so it's kind of a fun timing...
It, it's, it's timing, it's changes in methodology of food service loss of tip money. But, you know, when I talk about really reducing our expenditures, the first thing we do is look operationally and look for discretionary items.
I'm just trying to understand of what's on this 1.558. How much is timing?
How much of it is timing?
And it'll even out over the course of its full school year. How much is real? Because whatever's real, we gotta add to 2.3.
Well, 2.3 accumulates over time anyway, yeah.
Right.
So, it comes gradually across the year.
2.3 doesn't just hit that.
Right.
The factors that I've identified with, really, are timing differences. The only factor that's, that's potentially impacting that 2.3 million dollars is if we do get three state aid payments instead of four. If tuition trends higher than I budgeted, you know, probably those are the two biggest factors that I'm looking at at this point. And, you know, otherwise, we manage the budget based on, you know, the information that we're given from staff, and staff is very frugal. Salaries and benefits are, we've done a complete analysis of salaries, and I think we're $20,000 off of budget right now for the whole year. So, it's, that, that's right on.
Right where we thought we were gonna be if, if the state pays us, so...
Yeah.
All we gotta do is go down there and talk... Can you get Ms. Rounder on the phone?
I tried to talk to the comptroller, and that didn't work, but, uh...
Carol who?
It's a female, but...
Carol who? That'll go hurt. Okay.
Yeah, they're not really, you know, we, we, the comptroller's office is not telling the State Board of Education anything at this point, except that they're working on it. So... Yeah, they're gonna get beer to us.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
A couple other items, just some things we've been working on, wanted to fill the board in. When we had the water main break and forced our closure at Odo Plain for two days, it also forces us a little bit to try to think outside the bias. We were trying to, you know, ultimately, there were a number of factors that led into that, that obviously, on the first day, the fact that there wasn't water pressure at Odo Plain forced our hand, because the building itself wasn't fire-safe, if you will, and the sprinklers were off. So, that was one issue that was no question, something that was outside our control, and the building in itself was unsafe. The second day, things we started thinking more about was, if we had the water pressure, but we just had a boil order on, right, what's the, what could we do? Not that we have to do this, but what can we do? Because District 56 tried to, you know, they get themselves through the day a little bit. There are differences, they don't, they bring in their food service, or then we have our kitchens on site. But what we started to do was brainstorm about possibilities that if it were to happen again, and that we were under a boil order, right, and we can't assume that we won't be, right? So, could we possibly get to the point where we could at least do a half-day for our kids and get them in, have some drinking water there, give them a modified breakfast, if you will, get them through the first half of their day, or shorten schedules, and then send them home on an early departure? So, I just wanted to let you know that that's one piece we've kinda been working on, just outside the box. It wasn't on our radar, but we started thinking, if this were to happen a third day, on Tuesday, we were meeting, forget it. If this happens tomorrow, we gotta get the kids in here for some part of a school day, and we were prepared to do that. It pushed our envelope a little bit to try to think, you know, we'll do the best we can, and even though we might not get them in for a full day because of our lunch in the kitchen, the amount we serve is just really beyond the scope of not, you know, in a boil order, that's beyond the scope of what our kitchen serves. But we probably could've gotten them in for a modified part of the school day at least and move forward. So, we've talked to food service about what they could do, we've talked about storing some water, we've talked to transportation about what we can do, and Pat and Greg and their staffs have created some modified schedules, that if we ever needed a real kind of half-day schedule to get the kids in and then let them out before lunch, we probably could get that done. So, it's not ideal, but we did wanna let you know, we're just, we're trying to think outside the box. The other thing we've been thinking about just recently was, we've got finals coming up next week, and we were looking at our calendars for, you know, this year and next year, and one thing that always scares us a little bit is what happens if we have a snow day during finals, right? Because it's, there's not, we don't have an extra day built in there at the end, and it's always just kind of concerned us, as, well, we hope it doesn't happen. So, but, so we're looking ahead, there's some things that we may be able to do in future years, you know, to, in case we did have one of those days be a snow day, you know, to give ourselves a day of cushion, if you will, because to have the kids come back after two weeks off and push them right into a final, you know, that's just not, it's not good, and, right, it's not great. So, we're talking about more things, bigger term, that may... And so we're talking about more things, bigger term, that may help solve that if we had a day of a cushion, which we don't this year and we won't next, but maybe after that. But the other thing we're talking about with transportation and the community is just being ready for, if we did have a really bad snow one morning, can we late start it? And it sounds like, well, of course, we could do that. But we've started now communicating this that, look, if it happened that we had the snow in the morning and the buses weren't getting out right away, could... We're just going to push this back by two hours and letting the community and our kids know we'll do this. And we've got to work some things out with transportation. But generally, those are some things that, you know, we're trying to work through. It's a little different for us too, whether 56 is in school or out of school in terms of our transportation. And so part of our thinking there is if it were bad enough snow to where 56 called off school, but we thought we could get our buses out two hours later in the morning, which is sometimes possible, that it may work for us pretty well without any glitches. So nothing that's... We can really do anything about other than we're trying to put on the website some information just about, you know, if it happens that we have snow, we can always delay the start of our final exams to hopefully not lose one of those days.
Two things. One, going back to your... There was no financial impact on us getting school closed for two days. It's when you get to a third day, is that correct?
So we're the dis... We're allowed to close... Because we have two campuses, it's... There's... We're still allowed to count ourselves as open for those two days.
Correct. Right, right.
The district itself wasn't closed. It was a school that had an emergency, so...
And then the school closings, I just want to make sure we take any consideration down the road. And if we do close, a lot of parents are reliant to just... They need babysitters for their younger ones. So when 56 does close, maybe you're relying on their older children to maybe stay home in the overalls.
Right, we would...
That might be just something we just want to take into consideration.
Absolutely. And if we had the cushion day, right? The piece about that is right now, we're... Because we've got three exam days in three days, right? And it's right there before our two weeks off. And so our ideal is if always, is if the senders aren't in, right? We would be... We wouldn't want to be in, right? But with our finals, there's no question that we'd have... We would probably, for 4,000 kids, really disrupt a significant piece of that conclusion, so...
Calendar adjustment, maybe make it institute day, the last day, rather than a final day.
And that's one of the things... That's exactly what we were talking about, about just talking through that, so maybe we can have that there. Yet we always still, in our calendar guidelines, also try to stay within 86 to 90 days in each of our academic semesters. So there's some guidelines that we have in our calendar that bump up against it too. We're just... We're trying to work through them as we can. And obviously, we appreciate your patience and support when we had to close O'Plane. It's not a reason. The one other interesting thing is when we looked through the language that went out about emergency weather closings, right? That we sent out again to families. There's a blurb in there about the fact that we don't like to do what we actually did on the O'Plane day, which is send buses right home, right? Because obviously, people planned on their kids being at school. The difference is on a snow day, if we get them here and it's snowing outside, they're here and safe, right? When they were coming to O'Plane, we couldn't keep them at... We didn't have a building that was safe for them to be in. And so we had to send them home on the buses. I mean, there's never a perfect answer to that, but at least a rationale of why we would keep kids in school as opposed to why we would turn them around. In part, it has to do with whether or not they're safe yet, so... A couple other positive things that have happened. We also had an opportunity last week to meet with the foundation regarding the EKG testing that back in 2012 brought a proposal to the district and the board. At the time, MacShevitz Foundation, at the time, there were some communication pieces that the district wasn't comfortable with, some sharing of information pieces. Some, we thought that they were asking for too much personal information on our kids in the process of registering. All that now has been fixed. So their communication is all online now. They're asking... All they're really asking for is a name and a student ID in order to get the kids enrolled if the parents want them to take the EKG testing. We think it's a dynamite program, you know, thanks to Mark and Pat and Greg and their staffs for working on trying to get this done. It's all on the parents, but it's $15 to have that initial screening done, which is a great price for parents who have kids in that age range just to get that early test out. So they've changed their program a little bit. They, even to their testimony, in part because of what some of our reservations were the last time they presented it to us, made them rethink kind of, well, do we really need to do this and is there a better way? So all the registration now, or the majority of the registration is online before the kids even come in. Tentatively, we're looking at March 1st and the 8th are our tentative dates.
Are we scheduled to do that? Do we know how which building is first?
I said Almond first, pardon me.
That's our... The tentative dates we... And we anticipate somewhere between 40 to 60%.
Sometimes I think what they were estimating, that between 40 to 60% of our parents might not have their kids do this because...
Right at that age, cause...
You know, identifying some heart problems.
John, two questions. First of all, is this open for all students or only sports students?
All students.
Oh, good, good. The second question is, what if the parents can't pay the $15?
There's... We asked some questions about that. They're on their honor system for the free... If they're free and reduced lunch students, it's waived. And it's on an honor system when they register. Totally, their goal is to have more kids tested, right? I mean, ultimately, that's what they're trying to do.
Right.
I think there was another piece to that, I think, if I remember right. There was a question about, there were a number of volunteers that were coming in and the background checks. They didn't want to go through background checks, I remember correctly.
Yeah.
It was a while ago, but I think that was part of that, why we didn't move forward. I think it's a great idea. I can remember correctly, that was another part of that.
And we process that quite a bit with them.
Is that correct?
That was another part of it, yes.
So was that part of the dress?
They decreased their amount of volunteers as well.
But are they... Are they still doing background checks on the... We are...
This is where we ended up with it. Of all the schools that do this, and there's a lot of them that do it, right? The great majority of... We think maybe Stevenson is the only one that puts them through... Puts these parents... Because these are, generally speaking, a lot of these people are parents in the community too, that put them through any further background check than they would as if they were coming into the school and being swiped with their driver's license to make sure they weren't on the sex offender registry. Which we would do normally for anybody coming into the building, and we would do that for these people as well. We talked a lot about the... About, you know, when, why would we do a further background check on these people? At the end of the day, because they're never... The people volunteering, number one, they're all gender-based. They're never with a kid alone. And there's always other trained medical people, kind of, if you will, outside, outside the curtain that we felt like, you know, obviously, they've been doing this for a while in a lot of other schools. And that would be one of the roadblocks that if we put it up, it would just, you know, it may cause us to lose some interest in or volunteerism by our parents. And we actually felt pretty safe at the end of the day, putting all the people who want to volunteer through our normal process that come into the building.
Sometimes, though, we cut ourselves with our own sword, though, sometimes. Our board policy is pretty clear about volunteers, so...
Yeah, and so, Mike, the interesting thing about that is we, in fact, our policy meeting today, right? We talked about the fact that we need to do a better job of creating a definition of what that means. Because there's a lot of people that volunteer for the district that probably you guys wouldn't expect to approve them or to have us put them through a significant background check. Any of the... A band parent who shows up to help load instruments on the truck, right? For an hour and a half, they're technically volunteering their time. But we haven't really clearly identified what's a volunteer formally for the district that we would put through a background check. Obviously, anybody working over some periods of time with kids, right? In an instructional manner, for sure, those are no brainers. And then there's some others as well. This was one that actually was kind of a test for us about how do we feel about this? About should we background check or not? Because we're talking about a period of a few hours generally, that most of the people come in and volunteer their time, where we thought if we start to play too hard on the serious background checks, we may or may not be able to do this service for our kids. But we did have a long conversation with it. They assured us that the other schools are putting all their... Generally speaking, doing what we're planning on doing, which is obviously checking.
So did the committee come up with some new language on determining how and when we do background checks?
We'll work on the definition... What we want to work on is the definition of a volunteer. And, right, administratively, so that if somebody asks, do they need this, right? So for our robotics mentors, they're going to be over a period of time working with kids. And at times, potentially by themselves, or at least, you know, without, not in the eyesight of the supervisor. Right, so this... These are cases that we definitely would probably say, yeah, those are people that we would want background checked and we'd want to know a little bit more about them. People who come in for a few hours to help with outside, you know, in the concession stand out by the booster club, there's probably, we would feel that, well, they might not even come in contact with a kid, right? And generally speaking, we probably would feel that they're just somebody who's a helper. There is a gray area there that we were... That really forced our conversation on this issue. So your question's a good one.
Right. I think that the... When the Catholic Church went through their strict training for anybody that had to do with kids, they defined it as ones who had direct contact versus ones who weren't really having any contact. So if you were a volunteer at a food table at the church picnic and the children were probably coming with the parents, those people did not have to be checked. But if you were running a kids game or you were a volunteer at the jumpy house, well, you definitely then were going to have contact with the kids and those people had to go through.
And we'll continue to sort through those definitions. It's great conversation, right, in terms of where we're at. And the board has a weigh-in on that too, so... But we didn't want to, obviously, the program, it seems to us like it's great value for our families. And because they had answered all the questions about the sharing of information piece and, you know, there's value, direct value for our students and families. So that's on March 1st and 8th.
I think it's a great program and I'm glad we're finally doing it.
I did want to bring just a few other things as a reminder. We had... We got our website. And one of our strategic plan issues has to do with our website. And eventually, we'll get to the point where we have a new website for the district. Rob Parrott's been doing a great job overseeing that committee and working with our technology team and our administrative team and then some heavy users to get through the first couple of steps. Our goal is by March 1st, not, you know, we might fall behind, but the goal is by March 1st, we have identified a vendor, given our staff and students and parents an opportunity to weigh on, weigh in on what some of those templates might look like within there. So that come June 1st, if we have a new website, we've at least had a number of eyes look at what our potential options are. So just to give you a heads up on the progress on that piece. We also, if you're... Tomorrow, I'm going to send a letter out to all of our families with a number of things. It's going to encourage them to go to the strategic plan if they're interested. Because as we talked about at our November meeting, we're including language in our strategic plan, specifically as it has to do with the issue of respect and diversity. And so under student life, we're adding a bullet that's regarding our code of conduct language. We're adding a bullet that has to do with student organizations supporting diversity. We're under curriculum instruction. We're making sure that our English and social studies departments specifically are exposed to a wide variety of authors and perspectives. We have... We also want to make sure that we're looking at reports that will ensure that our students have equal access to all of our programming. And we also, one thing that came up more recently is we talked about the fact that Schuler does great work for our kids. We know that, right? And we see the results every year that we're fortunate to have them. But they've also got a very select group of kids that they start with and pick and select. We know that too. It doesn't take anything away from the work they do. It just means we started talking about, you know, some of the things that they do, not all of them, but some of the things that they do, we might be able to do internally as well for some students. Meaning that some of those services in terms of exposure to the college process, to the application process, to supports along the way. We may be able to... Some mentoring, some things that they do naturally as part of the program, we may be able to do that for current non-Schuler kids. Just something that came out of some recent conversations. Under shared leadership, we want to make sure that we continue to focus in on reviewing our hiring and professional development practices, practices to support our diverse staff and make sure that our teachers are reflective of our diverse student body. And under community and communication, we want to make sure that we have a parent guardian committee to investigate some of these issues and the conversations that we need to have. That meeting is January 31st. So we have a meeting on January 31st that Pat and Greg have helped a great deal with and inviting some parents that were interested all the way, as we've been going through the last six weeks or so. So we've invited them to the meeting where, obviously, it's an open invitation. And we'll facilitate a conversation to see what other ideas might come out of that plan. So that's on January 31st here at 6:30. We also, the week prior to that, just as a reminder, on the 24th, have our annual parent teacher advisory committee. So that's a normal annual standing meeting where we talk about code of conduct, language, changes that might be in line for the code of conduct, as well as other plans that would significantly affect the students in the 17, 18 school. So those are two meetings. Sound good?
Yeah, that's great.
That's under the diversity piece of... And tomorrow, by the way, I'll add these bullets into our strategic plan. We want to make sure we add them before we send it out. There's a link on my letter that encourages people to go to the strategic plan if they haven't already. Last but not least, we have a hack fest on January 28th and 29th, right?
Not computer hacking, everybody.
So what's the... Rico and Kim have done a great job. We had a meeting today about setting up some logistics. What's the best way to describe what this activity looks like? Someone back there?
It's an innovation marathon.
Creativity fair.
Creativity fair.
Stem-based learning, project-based learning, all the phrases. The kids will be given three main areas to choose from, and they need to come up with an innovation, a hack to better improve the situation. One of them's biopharmaceutical, the other one is...
Clean energy.
Clean energy.
That's the third one.
And the other one is, um, yeah, I forget what the third one is.
I'm probably the third one, but...
Off the top of my head. But it's sanctioned and we follow the outline of Major League Hacking, which is a worldwide organization. 65,000 hackers participated last year.
Those old people think that sounds bad.
It does sound bad.
It does.
It's really fun to say, because it sounds bad, but it's not that kind of hacking. Think of it more in terms of like a lighthacker who, you know, comes up with ways to make things easier in life. That's sort of the goal of...
And all your major universities, Northern Illinois has one, I think Michigan State has one. I think there's one at Northwestern every year. So, I mean, a number of these universities have these gatherings of like, you know, STEM learning and creativity and innovation.
And we're partnering, we're working with a group of students, but we're also partnering with Adam Cahn and Akon Semi Conductors to kind of help spearhead the whole movement and working on getting lots and lots of different corporate and technology-based sponsors, but also managers to come in and work with our kids.
At O'Plane.
Who'd you say the contact was that got this rolling?
Adam Cahn played a big role in getting it started. He reached out to Kim and I and we got it rolling on our end. And Carol's been very supportive of us trying to do something outside the box, as well as John and the administrative team.
They... The entire budget for the event will be covered by sponsorships and funding, so we just kind of picked up.
Tomorrow morning, after the press release are on, when the press release comes out, I'll send you guys an email. There'll also be a video in there. You can kind of get a better idea of what is going to happen. And like, like I said, it's, you know...
All good.
No one can be breaking in any computer system.
What's the date?
It's January 28th and it goes through to the 29th.
That's a no- or none. The kids can lock in and stay all night if they want to keep working.
They don't have to.
Right, I know. That's it. They can.
There's going to be a dismissal time if their parents want them home or they want to leave.
We'll have activities throughout the night, all kinds of different things. And there's cup stacking contests and all kinds of different things.
That'll be when the hacking takes place in the middle of the night, yeah.
Well, you're more than welcome to attend the silent disco, which will take place...
Silent disco?
Bluetooth headphones and...
Bluetooth headphones with music being broadcast over Bluetooth, so nobody can hear it except somebody who's got a headphone on. So you won't hear... You won't hear any grown-up saying, "Turn that racket down."
No, they're going to be saying, "You're too quiet. You're... I'm nervous."
I'll put it in the email, but feel free to stop by anytime throughout the event. We'd love to have you, show you around.
The 28th, January 28th.
We also, thanks for your flexibility tonight in moving down to the library this week. Student council at both buildings has Letters to Santa going on, and they're collecting the gifts for the little ones for about 1,100 or so little ones. So that's why we are here, and that's a great endeavor and initiative in and of itself. And then on the centennial front, we have a couple of things left this week. We do tonight. There was a choir concert tomorrow and Thursday. There are band concerts over at O'Plane. We also have boys swimming and diving, their centennial meet is Thursday evening as well, and then Friday night we have the comedy show and our centennial wrestling meet here. So we have a number of centennial events that are still coming up, and those have been... And there's one more item on the superintendent's report, right?
Peace.
Yes, I'd like to introduce, yes, Mike Schuman. He's our veteran lead teacher for the industrial tech department. Come on up here. You get to do this now. Uh, Mike is, he has a very small department, but I would call them a very mighty department, 'cause they bring a lot of good things to Warren through their department, so I'm gonna let you take it away.
Oh, is it Mike?
It's your turn.
Sounds good, I didn't realize.
Mighty.
Hi, guys, how you doing?
Oh, good.
Thanks for having me back, it's been a while, so.
It is.
Um, I was told I'm supposed to brag a little bit, which we're not good at, but, um, we got some cool stuff that's been going on since I've last stood here and talked to you, so I'd like to share a little bit of that, maybe. Oh, there we go. Um, obviously, um, yeah, that's hard to see, I'll just go through it quickly. Obviously, um, you know, from a curricular standpoint, which is why we're here, um, we're definitely a supporter of the Corps. Um, we feel like we are, um, you know, a major part of pushing, helping to push the district with all our instructional strategy initiatives. So even though we may not be a Corps, we're just an elective Corps, we're definitely on board with everything. We feel like that a lot of those were meant for us and what we do in our environment, so we have a great, uh, opportunity to, um, put a lot of these strategies to use, and then give back to the rest of the departments to show what's possible and how it can work in different types of environments. So we're pretty excited about some of that work we've done. Um, in terms of curriculum, we've started evolving our woods program. Um, we've had a traditional four-year woods program, um, four years, um, year-long classes, and, you know, we're always evolving, we're always changing, and we got to a point where really, we've evolved so much that what we had, what we were calling it is not what we have. We've really, over the years, started to include, um, some more technologies into our woods, and, um, in this class in particular, I'm a little out of order, and that's my fault. But the first class that we have here, um, that we've changed from a different course is DIY. This one specifically, um, came to life from feedback we saw in the strategic plan. Um, when you read, we, we read, 'cause that's what we do, we read the end where all the three statements were, and like every fourth or fifth one was calling for, um, more general home skills, hands-on stuff, life-type skills. So, um, DIY was developed to kind of give students the tools to solve those life's problems. We'll do some light plumbing activities, um, basic electrical skills, and then even, you know, teach, um, using general skills and working with materials, um, doing simple stuff like off of Pinterest or things like that. Um, one of the things that we try to do in our department is, um, teach students how to teach themselves. Um, we don't always have the answers, so we build a lot of our projects where they have to go, you know, we just say, "Figure out how to do this and come back and teach me." So we teach them that, you know, stuff is out there, go find it, let's sift through it, let's see what, what we understand from it, let's learn from it, and let's bring it to life, let's make it, let's do it, whatever. And so that's really one of the thought processes beyond half of this course is, you know, I'm, I'm remodeling my kitchen right now, and, well, my, my wife's not looking 'cause she thinks I'm awesome, I look up YouTube, and I remember, that's right, that's how I wired that, and then I put it away, you know, life is good. So I don't always remember, we don't always know, but we go find the answers. So this class, we're pretty excited about to help get students in that mindset with some just general home skills and how to learn for themselves and teach themselves. Cam was the one I started with, that's my apologies. Um, we've been slowly but surely bringing in, um, you know, CNC mills, 3D printers, the laser engravers, a lot of this technology to help in our woods program. Um, but one thing that we found that was really cool was, um, with the Chromebooks. When those books came out, half-guard departments, like, we're not really sure, we get the big picture, why are these important? We're not really sure what to do with them, but slowly but surely, they've become just an awesome, normal, everyday tool, just like the hammers, the wrenches, everything else. Uh, we found out that we could actually use the Chromebooks and some online software, um, to do some of the simple, basic programming. So now what we're gonna do is, not only are we gonna teach kids to work with tools and prepare materials, but then we're gonna teach them how to, to program and run and operate the equipment to make the specific parts. Um, the hands-on skills and trade are always gonna be important. We all know there's an aspect of, of most industries now where things are automated or computerized, especially for things that are very complex. So we have an opportunity now to do that in our classrooms with our kids, which is extremely exciting. Um, I think the other exciting part for us is the fact that it is gonna be held in our woodshop. A lot of schools do this in what they call like a clean room or a clean environment, but they're given the material, machine set up, all they do is put it in, punch some numbers, and it makes it. They really haven't done anything, they really haven't learned anything. They, they haven't critically thought or, or problem solved, or, and that's not what we wanna do. So this is a great, it, it just, it's not traditional, but as, the more we look in, like, this is even better. This is a better way to really engage and involve these kids and see all of it. So we're, again, really, really excited about this. Um, our department is always trying to add depth, um, to what we do and for the school. Clubs and activities, services, community, jobs and internships, competitions. Um, we've got some amazing, amazingly skilled, uh, young men and women, and so we are trying to have them put what they've learned and what they know back to use for you. Um, we're printing shirts, plaques, engraving, you know, pine glasses, making posters, building frames, I mean, you, you name it, we're making stuff for the maintenance, for the staff members, um, whatever, and this is kids making it. It's really cool to see what they've learned, and then when they make it, and see how it's put to use in real world, how excited you guys get that you get to see it, use it, wear it, share it. It's just a positive experience all around, so we're constantly trying to help service the school. Uh, in terms of community, our doors are always open. Um, we hold project leadway trainings, um, technology education roundtables, GAD meetings, open houses, field trips, um, EDD night. Uh, we just held a project leadway open house last week for our freshmen, sophomore, um, project leadway students and their parents. Um, probably had, um, in the end, probably about over two hundred people attend. And, um, we basically give them some updates on project leadway, and then they get a chance to go back and see the labs and the classrooms. But the, the condition is, the students have to teach their parents something. So the students take their parents into the labs, and then here are parents trying to build and set up marble sorders and create something in Adventure, but it's really neat to put the parents in the kids' shoes, see the kind of work they're doing, hear the opportunities that are available. Um, look, we, we work hard, and it, it doesn't happen without their support. So we want them to see what we're doing, how we're doing it, and just the impact it's making to let them know that we really appreciate you, get your kids here early, letting them stay late, and doing all the stuff that is required of that program. So that was, oh, there was also seven universities there. So, um, while they were there as freshmen and sophomores, they could talk to universities about engineering right then and there. So we're trying to bring it in-house to them, one-stop shop. So that was amazing. Our career counselors are absolutely amazing, and they helped me get those seven in, and we're working on more for next year. And then, of course, at your service, we do a lot of stuff outside of school as well. Um, you know, the skills and talents our kids have can help a lot of people. We wanna try to teach them how amazing and positive that can be. So we can, Northern Area Food Bank, bike repair drive, auctions to the store, Feed My Starving Children. Uh, we do a STEM box program at Warren Newport that's always sold out, so to speak. It's always fills, always fills up. Um, CLC Robotics Engineering Nights, and then we do a Girls in STEM and Engineering Outreach at the middle schools in CLC. So whatever we can do to kinda promote what we do, and, you know, we think we have a positive thing, and we'd like to see more people involved. Um, the Abbott Internships has been ongoing for a while. Um, it's gone so well that they actually are rehiring our interns, which they never used to do. Um, we have high school interns that have gone four or five years as interns through college now, which they never used to do. It's only Warren students, and it's so, it's, they're doing such a great job, and our kids have made such a positive impact that for the first time, they're gonna start including our sophomores as a part of their internship program. They are so blown away at, um, you know, the attitude, the work ethic, um, maturity of our students, that they want them younger. They pay these kids to come in and get, you know, engineering experience, and they have amazing mass tours, and it's ridiculous. It's pretty darn cool, so we're pretty excited about that. And then, of course, the competitions, you know, you gotta have a little competitive spirit, too, you'll have a nice stuff, but, uh, we like to win sometimes, too. So we got the drafting competition, which we place every year at regional and state, and then our robotics competition has grown strong the last few years. So, um, I don't know, man, I'm out of voice, so I guess that means I'm done. But, um, we really truly do appreciate your support. Um, we have a ton of fun, can't tell, I get too excited about this, so, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and, um...
You do.
Very, very easy to see you're very passionate about what you do, just, just listening to you and the enthusiasm that you brought forth tonight. Uh, you pass it on to our kids, thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, no worries, it's fine, that's cool.
So I wanna say something, too. I, I think what you're doing is wonderful as well, but, um, the one thing, you know, what you're doing for the internship for the kids that are going through to college at Abbott, there's probably other types of people who would come in for kids that learn CNC and stuff like that who might not go to college. So industry could come in and, and learn, and, because there's a shortage of that, and, and then, there is. I mean, there's, you see signs everywhere, they, they can hire a lot of kids for ten dollars an hour that don't know anything, but you get a kid out of high school that actually has a skill set, they can get hired for money, not for, and not for ten dollars an hour, so. I don't know how you exploit that or advertise it or whatever, but...
Stuff like that, like, for example, we had a group of kids that was interested in learning welding, but we don't teach welding anymore. We had some of the equipment, we don't traditionally teach it. So, uh, myself, and we actually brought in some certified welders, and we just ran workshops.
Yeah.
Little, little stuff like that, I mean...
Yeah, I understand, no, it's...
But we try to do little things to help everybody.
Yeah, everybody, yeah, it's because, I mean, part of them end up at, at this, uh, at the tech campus, right? 'Cause they had carpentry and whatever, and I don't know how that all could work together, but it, it seems like it should.
We feed quite a few, a lot of them now will go through, like, our, we'll start in our traditional woods. Um, it's, it's a great start to understanding working material, working with tools, the safety aspect. And as we talk about careers and opportunities, that's one that piques a lot of their interest. They love that type of work, that type of environment, and, uh, so we do have a lot of kids that we send them...
Yeah, it's good, too. I mean, there's, there's a big shortage of trade workers, too. I mean, there's, there are corporations like Granger and stuff like that are giving money away if people were trained for the trades.
Yeah.
They'll give you stuff just to go train, because there just aren't enough of them.
And that's why I'm glad, um...
Yeah.
We never really had that fight here at Warren, thank goodness, we never really had it. But, you know, as I talk to my counterparts all over the state, Midwest, you know, for years, there was a fight to just make it all clean and simple and easy, no hands-on, no trade, and we were lucky enough that they allowed us to, to do that, and we still, I think you see embedded a lot of that in what we do, because even if you work at Abbott, you gotta work your hands, you gotta, you gotta build, do prototype, whatever.
Right, right, right.
So we don't wanna lose that from what we do, so.
Okay.
We're excited that it's a part of it, for sure.
Thanks.
One more thing, if I could, uh, back on December first, Chris Yokira's actually made a trip down to the state board, and on our behalf, accepted a certificate of accomplishment really for the district as, for our ten years in project leadway. We were of the, we were pioneers, not the very first, but of the very first waves, if you will, of people who got on board with project leadway. And since that time, right, we have just continued to grow and expand, uh, in, in quantity and quality of the work. And so that not only goes to Mike, obviously, and his team, but to the board and your leadership for support of the program back in the time, you know, ten years ago, and continuing on today. So I'm gonna give this to Mike on behalf of everybody, but I did wanna let you know that it's a very important ten-year recognition for our district.
Right. Is that it?
That is it, thank you very much.
Right. Okay, we will move right into the new business part of the agenda, which is the summer school.
It's a tough act to follow, it's a incredible...
Yeah, what have you been doing, Nate?
Apparently nothing. In your packet, um, you'll see a couple of things. One of them is the summer school packet, and the other is an inter-office memorandum for all of the different changes and updates from last year. I'm not gonna read through this for you, but I do wanna highlight a couple of things in there for you. Uh, again, it's going to be, this, uh, summer school is gonna be at the Almond Campus. There is in your memo, memo, a change, uh, which was an error that we found underneath the six-week session, where it begins in January twelfth, it says for period two begins, it begins at seven-fifty, that's not correct, it's actually nine-fifty.
It'd be June twelfth.
Class is started at nine-fifty, not seven-fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the things that we're doing this year that we haven't done in the past really is, we are going to be, for the second session, starting on July fifth, uh, which is in the middle of the week. So we're going to make up those days on the, that, that first week, so it's, I think, it's the seventh and then the fourteenth, the following. So we'll be doing two Fridays, uh, where we normally only do Monday through Thursday. We figured that giving everybody an opportunity to be with their families was important, uh, staff and students as well. Uh, the registration process, there's no changes there, uh, just the dates. We're, we're starting a little bit later this year, because I like to do the registration starting on a SIP day where I can be available, because it's online. So there's, sometimes there's parents who are calling to try and get some information, oh, this, it's slow, or there's other issues that come up. So that's why we do it on a SIP day, and that's the first SIP day coming, uh, coming up after the break. Um, the curricular changes were already mentioned before, uh, a lot of work was done on that. I think, uh, the, the staff came up with some really great opportunities for students this summer, so, um, I thank you, them, for that. There were a couple other changes that we made as well. Um, last year, we had split up the ELL courses into, you know, uh, English Language Learner English class and also a Read One Eighty. So we, the students met for two and a half hours for three weeks, which is not enough to earn any credit. So, uh, for each one of those, for the English, the ELL English, and then also the Read One Eighty. One of the things that came out of that was, they were there for an entire day, because a lot of them took a study skills class for the second portion of the day, which went for six weeks. And so they earned a half a credit for that, so we were looking for opportunities for them to earn even more credit. So we combined the Read One Eighty in with the ELL for an entire six weeks, for two and a half hours, and we called it, um, an ELL English Fluency Class. So it wouldn't take place of any class that's being taught during the regular school year, but it's gonna support that particular student, so that they can improve their English skills. We thought that was important, um, for them, because they are lacking in that area, for them to be in an environment where they're learning English and pretty much all the time, and then they're gonna get an opportunity to, uh, to improve that for the regular school year, 'cause obviously their classes are taught in English. Um, we also moved the study skills from the English department down into the ELL, because that seems to be primarily where students are going to be coming from. Um, we haven't had a whole lot of students in the past come for that class from the regular ed area, so it made sense for us to put it there, because we are enrolling students in there and kind of asking, and kind of tell the students that they need to be there, and it's free, so they, they, they can take advantage of it. One of the other things that came up, uh, this past year was, um, our 504s and IEPs. Ms. Garland and I, we were talking about how we need to support those students. Um, we have always had somebody available, uh, to read tests or have extended time for students, but we didn't always catch the student that's coming from the feeder schools. So we wanna make that process a little bit better, because we do get information from the feeder schools. It's still in process, and over the summer, some things get lost. So we added some information into the packet, so when parents see that, they can notify me and let me know that their student either has a 504, an IEP, and then I can pass that information along, and then we can make sure that their accommodations are met over the summer. So just to transition from the middle schools to the high school, we wanna make that a little bit more seamless for those students, so that they have a good experience right from the beginning when they have their experiences with us. Um, I think that's basically all of the information that's any different from last year. Are there any questions that any of you may have for me?
Nate, is this the first year we can do a credit?
Yes.
That's what I thought, I'm, I'm glad you did that, I really appreciate that. And another thing I liked where if you cancel and it's a remedial class, that they're gonna be able to still do the class.
Yeah.
I forget what you call that.
We, it's, we started that last year, the year before. We started that last year, the year before. When we were trying to manage the low class size and making it still economically feasible because it is a, it's a stand on its own, where we're not asking the district for money, it's tuition-based. So we were running classes that were really low, and in order to make sure that those students still had opportunity, we have classes that students take here on our A-plus computer-based program. So that's something that we've continued to have success with so that students will be able to, if we don't have enough to run a class size that's feasible, that they still can have that opportunity.
I'm glad you did that. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, there's no more questions or discussion, then we need a motion.
I'll move to approve 2017 summer school program.
Motion by Mondays?
By Mondays.
Monday, Tuesday.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
We have seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along to the AP World History Trip to Italy.
Hello.
Chaperone. You know those spots already?
I'm in. Sorry. We still have so many people who want a chaperone in our department, so...
I'll bet you do.
We'll let you know when a spot opens up. We just wanted to say thank you, of course, for your continued support for our trips. This will be our fifth trip, if approved. And I especially want to say thanks because we were in one in Paris last spring break, as you guys might remember, and we ran into quite a few challenges when it came to our international situation and everything. EF was amazing as a company, reaching out to us and providing communication so that then I could communicate with you guys. So like I said, we just wanted to say thanks again, especially with approving the German trip, which I get to partake in as a regular person, so we're very excited for that. We're talking Italy for 2018 spring break. This will be our second time going to Italy. It was a very, very popular trip mainly because our students in our Western Civ courses get so much exposure to Italy and especially the Renaissance. So we wanted to offer that opportunity to them again, especially having that four-year turnaround. Most of the students who have gone on that trip are already graduated, or if not, will be seniors and probably not eligible, depending upon their age. This time, we're gonna stick just to Italy, Rome, Florence, and Venice. And so very nice variety of central and the northern part of Italy. Kids will see the Colosseum, they'll see the Sistine Chapel, and the Vatican. Those are the big highlights that they hit in their classes, and then just are amazing to see. And then there's also all the food that they're gonna enjoy as well. That was a major part of last trip, so we're looking forward to that. The class is pretty reasonable, eight days, $3,600, and includes everything except for their lunches and anything that they want to purchase on their own. And that also includes the trip insurance, which we've made a requirement since, I think, a couple of years ago, right? So yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, thank you again for all your support.
Thank you. I'm really, I'm gonna vote against it just because you cut me out of being a chaperone, so, come on. Like, just like to the quick.
Would not be appropriate.
I know. I can't go. I'm not gonna do that, so...
I move to approve the AP World History Trip to Italy from March 25th, 2018, to April 2nd, 2018.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Motion by Beyandi, second by Drake.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Absolutely.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, next item is the approval of the resolution to transfer monies from the Working Cash Fund.
This is a temporary inter-fund transfer to the Operations and Maintenance Fund, Transportation Fund, and IMRF Fund. The purpose of these transfers is to provide positive fund balances in those funds until we start getting our taxes the third week of May. We do this every year, and once our taxes come in, we repay the Working Cash Fund. Any questions? Thank you.
I move to approve the resolution to transfer monies from Working Cash Fund to Operations and Maintenance Fund, Transportation Fund, and IMRF Fund.
Second.
Barb, roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Conway. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
We have seven yes.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the resolution of association or organization with Lake Forest Bank and Trust.
We've maintained a, an account with Lake Forest Bank and Trust for many years, and this, this handles our flexible spending dollars. So anybody that has flex dollars taken out of their account goes into Lake Forest Bank, and then when they ask for reimbursement, it comes out of Lake Forest Bank. So the resolution was very old. The bank has asked us to update that. They do not, we've got, we're asking that the board president and board treasurer have the authority to sign that on behalf of the district. There is only one signer on the account. It does not require two signatures, and that's a condition from Lake Forest Bank. They can't handle the compliance of that. So, but most funds are electronic, so there is rare occasion that we actually sign a physical check. We're asking you to approve that resolution.
Who's designated then as the signer?
It would be Mr. Anderson or myself.
I move to approve the resolution of association or organization with Lake Forest Bank and Trust.
Second. Roll call.
Motion by Beyandi, second by Anderson. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of disciplinary recommendation for student 2017-02.
I move to approve the resolution for disciplinary recommendation. The resolution for disciplinary recommendation for student 2017-02.
Second. Roll call.
Motion by Conway, second by Walls.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
I abstain because I was not able in my iPad to get the, the information that I needed to make a good decision.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
I will abstain as I am currently the principal of the regional safety school program.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
So I have five yes and two abstentions. Motion carries.
Okay, so, thank you. Now we move on to the bills. So what is, did you take this off of the motion F, Carol?
Yes, and we're gonna change motion F.
Who?
It's actually gonna go to $1,906,299. The Hodges bill was actually included in the, in item F, so I'm gonna back that up along with the $110.52.
$1,000,000? Okay, so I move to approve the payment of the bills for 12/13/2016 in the amount of $1,9762.99.
Second.
Roll call.
I didn't hear the second.
As Liz, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't think my...
Motion by Anderson, second by Beyandi. Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
There are seven yes. Motion carries.
So G stays as it is, Carol, then?
G stays as it is, yes.
Okay, so I move to approve the payment of the bills for, legal bill for December 13th, 2016, in the amount of $8,469.1.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
No.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes and two no. Motion carries.
What's the amount on the other one, then?
$110.52 to our most default.
Okay. I move to approve the payment of the bill for 12/13/2016 in the amount of $110.52.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Abstain.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have six yes and one abstention. Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the personnel hiring. We have no changes.
I'll move to approve Exhibit A, Hiring Recommendations numbered 132 to 137, as posted.
Second.
Ms. Beyandi, second it. Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Beyandi. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Very good. Moving on to... Oh, come on. You're killing me. Just freaked out. I don't know. Have to get back in. What is it? Approval of the regular meeting minutes from November 15th, 2016.
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of November 15th, 2016.
Seven.
Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Conway. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
I abstain. I was not present.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have six yes and one abstention. Motion carries.
Moving on to old business. The next item is, Item A is Resolution Authorizing the Final Aggregate Tax Levy for 2016. There's no... Yeah.
The final aggregate levy is, includes a 5% increase in EAE, $10 million in new construction, and 7 tenths of a percent CPI. We estimate that we should receive about $488,000 in new revenue. We're not required to have a public hearing because the final levy is less than 5% of the prior year. So it is not subject to the truth and taxation hearing. No notice was required to be published in the paper. You have a copy of the certificate and all the resolutions and certifications that go with that. Any, any questions that I can answer from the board?
I can't remember. I'm sorry, but the $10 million in new construction. Sorry, I'm having a blank tonight. Can you help me remember what that is?
Yes.
Is it safety, life safety or something?
The $10 million in new construction, that affects the computation of the tax levy, and the new construction happens to be three assisted living facilities, two new subdivisions, and some other property.
IP, it's about time. We haven't had any new construction in a while.
What was the aggregate anticipated increase over last year or over this year?
1.2%. Yes, with new construction, it calculates to be about 1.2%.
Okay. Then I move to approve the resolution authorizing a final aggregate tax levy for the year 2016, which includes the certificate of tax levy and a separate resolution for Illinois municipal retirement, social security, special education, leasing, and CDOL IMRF by the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District, number 121, Lake County, State of Illinois.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item is, Item B is the Approval of Special Meeting Minutes and Executive Session Minutes of November 7th, 2016.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes and executive session minutes, November 7th, 2016.
Second.
I would also like to apologize to the board. I was misreading the minutes the last time that they came up, and so it was my fault that they were moved to old business.
Okay, thanks, Liz. So I move to approve this special, did we already do this?
We did.
Roll call.
Motion by Beyandi, second by Anderson. Mr. Drake?
I abstain. I was not present.
I just want to have so much fun.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
I abstain. I was absent.
Mrs. Beyandi?
Oh, yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have five yes and two abstentions. Motion carries.
That is the last item on the agenda, so I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
And Munda.
Second by Munda.
Right.
And we have Mrs. Beyandi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure as always. See you all in, you know, happy holidays.
Happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Can we list all the different holidays? Let's see, there's Christmas, there's Hanukkah, Ramadan, Qandahar.
Yeah. All the good stuff. Congratulations.